To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Agenda, do you have any amendments?
Yes, sir. If you'll go down to item 11, we have a budget revision for DSS for hurricane relief funds. Just today, there was another distribution that came down for energy assistance programs. Now typically, that goes through the NC FAST program. But in order to expedite it for those counties that were affected by the hurricane, they've asked that we go ahead and approve this now so we can get those checks out faster. So I asked that you add that amendment as an 11B. So we'll have 11A is the current amendment, and then 11B will be this new one, and we can discuss it further. And our DSS directors here can answer more questions about that later.
All right. And I think we've had some things happen in our realm. And speaking with our county attorney, who we'd like to welcome here tonight, Mr. Destin Hall, moving forward, is going to be our county attorney. And so we need to add a closed session at the end of our meeting tonight to discuss personnel matter. And I don't know what general statute that is.
And I think consultant board attorney as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, you want to add that as well.
And to be able to consult the board attorney.
Pursuit of the general statute.
Pursuit to the general statute in a personnel matter. So adding that amendment this evening. All right. Is anything else? All in favor? Six, five saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. So our first item on the agenda this evening, it brings us great honor in honoring Judge Robert Bob Brady, who's here this evening. And we've got a resolution in his honor. And I've asked our county clerk, Abby, to read that, as well as Mr. Duncan. Any comments that you have in that?
No, the, real quick, the Commissioner Potter came to me, I think around Thanksgiving holidays, and said, hey, this is something we'd like to do. And so we were able to meet with Judge Brady and his wonderful wife. And I got to learn quite a bit about his years of service, not only to the citizens of Caldwell County in terms of court, but also that his term as county attorney, and that's all documented here in this resolution.
All right. So Ms. Rich.
A resolution in appreciation of Robert Bob Monroe Brady for his 50 years of service.
Whereas Bob Brady has served the citizens of Caldwell County for 50 years. Upon attaining a bachelor of arts degree from Wake Forest University in 1971, and a subsequent Juris Doctorate from the Wake Forest School of Law in 1974, Bob began a private legal practice in Caldwell County with his partner, Charles Brewer. And whereas, Bob was appointed Caldwell County Attorney on November 16, 1981, serving until November 19, 1990. Bob brought stability to the office of county attorney in his nine years of service, taking the mantle of an office that had changed hands many times in prior years. He was dedicated to his position as county attorney, providing legal services regarding child protective services, adult protective services, juvenile justice, tax foreclosures, land closing, the sheriff's office, all county emergency services, counsel to the Board of Commissioners. And whereas, Bob led innovations in the ordinances and legal operations of Caldwell County. He developed the first animal control ordinance, first noise control ordinance, first racetrack ordinance, and accomplished essential work regarding the county landfill. And whereas, Bob was elected 25th Judicial District Court Judge on December 3, 1990, and was reflected, reelected unopposed to five more terms. He was appointed Chief District Court Judge in 2001, supervising a staff of roughly 40 court officials. His 34 years as judge marks him as the longest-serving judge in the history of Caldwell County. And whereas, Bob was an innovator in the legal and judicial fields. He created the Judges in Schools Program, where he left a lasting positive impact on the students of his district. He also was one of the first judges in North Carolina to be certified in juvenile justice. He completed groundbreaking work on the truth in scheduling principle, which ensured that litigants in family court received information on their next appearance before leaving court. And whereas, Bob was admitted to the North Carolina State Bar and the United States District Court of Western North Carolina Bar. He also belongs to a number of professional associations, including the North Carolina Association of District Court Judges, North Carolina Bar Association, and the 36 Judicial District Bar Association of North Carolina. And whereas, Bob served on the Caldwell Community College and Technical Institute Board of Trustees, and served as Secretary, Treasurer, Vice President, and President of the North Carolina District Judges Association. Most notably, he served on and chaired numerous boards and committees focused on improving the community welfare and judicial system, especially in support of children. In recognition of Bob's service to the Old North State, Governor McCrory bestowed upon him the Order of the Longleaf Pine. And whereas, in recognition of his service to juvenile courts, family law, and upon completion of the new courthouse, the Commissioners shall dedicate the Family Law Court and associated offices in honor of Robert Monroe Brady. Now therefore, be it resolved, on behalf of the citizens of Caldwell County, the County Commissioners publicly commend Robert Monroe Brady for his 50 years of faithful service to the citizens of Caldwell County.
Thank you, Abby. You certainly can. You've got to let me adopt all this before you start talking. So do I hear a motion? We adopt the resolution as has been presented this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the resolution as presented by our clerk.
Any other comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we knew that was going to carry. So now you can come up, Judge.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, county manager, Ms. Rich, thank you. As was stated, I served as county attorney for nine years. And so I was not in the seat where Mr. Hall is currently, because it wasn't arranged that way at the time. I was sitting over here on what would be your right. I've served with a number of fine council members of the commission, one of whose name is on this building, Alvin Starnes. Also, Dr. Thuss was on that commission. And unfortunately, a lot of the members that were on that commission are no longer with us. There were some really interesting times when I was serving on as county attorney. A lot of new ordinances were enacted. There was a lot of things that brought up quite a bit of contention. And so sometimes we'd be here till 11 or 12 o'clock at night in our meetings. And sometimes I'd have to go through a whole group of crowd of people just to get into the room. One of those meetings, we had to hold out at South Caldwell High School because the number of people that were coming to the meeting was so vast that we couldn't do it in this room. So at that particular meeting, there was a young lady who was shaking her finger in my face. She was very antagonistic about what the board was considering. So she stuck her finger in my face, and she was shouting things about her position on that particular board item. And Mr. Hall, you will learn that the county attorney has to do what they have to do. And so I will be celebrating our 37th anniversary in May of this year. That's where I first met my wife.
I've heard that story before.
That's a true story. And I tell you, I know that from being in that position that Mr. Hall is currently in, I know what the board goes through, what they face. Maybe you're not into as many contentious things as we were back in the 80s, but I know how difficult your job is and how many people are pulling at you. So I want to say how much I appreciate your even considering and taking the time to consider this resolution tonight, and particularly for granting that resolution. I thank you so much for your consideration and your kindness, and I'm humbled by your actions. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. We're going to come down and give you something. So we did a nice resolution for you. Anybody else want to picture? Because we want families up here.
Your one photo law.
I'd like to recognize all the judges that are here standing up here.
Yeah, please.
Members of the board, members of the, this attorney stand, you all stand, please. I appreciate it.
First reading that David Lackey could skip as our county attorney, he came so.
Want to get the family up there? You want to get the family up there together?
Perfect.
Hey, if you want to get the judges and the bar up here with you, Judge.
That'd be great. They'll come up.
You might not ever get to see them.
I know they're looking for you.
Starting up there like you like each other.
Y'all can look this way. Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate everyone being here for this. The good thing is, I don't see them much because I'm not in court a whole lot. So, but it's good to see everybody here this evening. All right. Our next item on the agenda is a minimum housing code enforcement. And again, in talking with our county attorney, we need to discuss that maybe in our closed session and before we take any action on that. And we may not take any action on that tonight, so.
Mr. Chairman, you got Mr. Willis here.
Yep.
Ask him to hang out for just a minute, if you will.
All right.
You want to come back to it?
We can. If you don't care to hang out and let us go into closed session, we're trying to cross the Ts and dot the Is on all of this.
I think you have three items. One is to actually do a nut bait on where we've been so far this year.
Okay.
Court part's going to be fun.
Yep.
Look at all we've done in the last year.
That'd be awesome.
Two items, three and four, we can table till after you're done.
Okay.
Just the mouse. Do I just need the mouse? Okay. So the first eight slides, I won't bore you with. That's a whole list of the cases we had in 2024. The green on this right-hand side shows the ones that were resolved. And then the open ones tell where we're at in the process on them. Some of them are fairly long, drawn-out cases that we're working on. With the thoughts being that we want compliance over enforcement. You know, we want the property owner to comply eventually, so we try not to be heavy-handed with them, which I think we all agree on. Okay? This one shows you just a little pie chart of the breakdown of the violations. By and large, it's solid waste, and then of course, junk and nuisance vehicles. Minimum housing, we just started after the May voting in the new ordinance. So it did not, and we want to use it rarely, but decisively when we do.
So does that, does that mean you've got 41 that are in that category of minimum housing?
Yeah, different things. Some of them are demolition.
Yes, sir.
Some of them are repairs.
Okay.
So some, they go from anywhere from property maintenance, where they need to take care of some outdoor stuff, to make the property itself safe, to the dwelling itself being unsafe. So it's all a vast array of things. Don't think that they're all demolition.
Right. Yes, sir.
From minor to major.
From, yeah, very minor all the way up to major.
Okay.
Take this one, for example. This was written up as minimum housing because the owner was living in an RV on the property. The permits went dead. We started minimum housing and started the process for the RVs. They renewed their permits and then have almost completed that house. So it's almost ready for them to move in. They might in fact be living in it now. This is also an issue that we're looking at for the same exact reason. The permits for this one will expire or have expired, and nothing has been done on the completion of the home. Here is one where the property maintenance was in question during a fire danger time. We abated that by having it mowed, the grass mowed, and cleaned up around there. The property owner lives down near Greenville, North Carolina, and has been warned numerous times on this. So we went ahead and just mowed it.
Is that a rental house or a house?
He doesn't, he doesn't rent either one of them.
So they're just vacant homes?
Vacant homes. So he wouldn't sell them if you forced him to. So he's fun to talk with. All right. This is an aerial. The, I want to thank y'all for the near map. It comes in extremely handy for here and for in court, because I can show them year after year after year where things haven't been taken care of.
Progress.
I was able to show the same toilet sitting in the front yard of a place for three consecutive years. So this is on Oak Hill School Road. It is one of our next-ups that we're going to be working on. Here you see one that's on Ike Starnes Road. In the same boat, this house had a stolen vehicle in the back that was being dismantled and having the wiring and everything burned in the back to get the cop proud of it. Ironwood Court was one that we went to court over and received court order to go in and clean it up. And this is us doing the cleanup. 6.3 tons of solid waste was removed from the property. The Sheriff's Department has this one right now for action on getting our money back. This was a vacating close. See, some of the minimum housings, if they're on a threshold, there's a 50% threshold. If it costs more than 50% of the value of the home to repair it and bring it up to code, the county would have to demolish it. It's a statute. If it's less than 50%, the county would have to repair it. That's according to the statute for us. The property owner can always fix it. If they want to spend a million dollars to fix this, they can spend a million dollars to fix it. But we are bound by that because they don't want us to punish them with a repair on something that shouldn't have been repaired. This one was on the edge, right in the middle, so we just did a vacating close on it. And the property owner's permission. He lives at the coast. So we went in and boarded it up, and there was a huge pile of junk that some squatters were living there throughout. We cleaned all that up as well. 3974 Walsh Road, which I'm told was a thorn in the community. Was.
Was.
The property owners were extremely helpful. And in fact, I told them they, they had to evict the people that were staying there because they had allowed them to stay there. It was the son of one of them that allowed these people to stay. So they went through an eviction process with them. But while they were evicting them, they went ahead and abated the asbestos nuisance while they were living there and tore it all off and bagged it up, double-bagged it, and then went out with their own excavators and demolished the place. And it is now a beautiful lot that they sold to one of the neighbors. So the remainder of this is on the two other properties. I'll scroll through them real quick so you can see the photos. Floodway for the one that sits in the floodway, completely burned out. This one is in Bloomfield Estates. It is completely burned out and caved in also into the lower areas. Pay particular, there's kids' toys and stuff outside there in the neighborhood. The people don't live there any longer. This is a 4668 Oak Hill School Road, which is one that we're going to do, probably go court on this with a civil action. And then there's more of the backside of the other burnout home.
Now, do we get our money back out of the property or other owners or somebody? We put a lien on it or how do you get it?
So typically, if it's a minimum housing one, we can demolish it, put a lien on the property and collect it. It's collected as a special tax. If there's money owed on it, that means we get paid first. If it's just a cleanup, it's a mechanic's lien, which we have to go back to court and get, or do a sheriff's sale on. The current one at Ironwood Court, we're doing a sheriff's sale on because they owed $25,000 in citations also. And this was a nuisance property, many, many arrests there. So most of these are, have underlying issues besides being unsafe to live in.
All right. Any other questions? Well, thank you for all you're doing.
Yep. Keep up the good work, Kirk.
We know that we've got some issues, but you're addressing them for us, so.
Just like eating an elephant.
Yes, sir. So I defer again to the Mr. Attorney. Should we just table item three and four and bring that maybe back at February's meeting?
If you want to, Mr. Chairman, if you want to table momentarily, we can talk about it shortly. It's up to y'all, though, but I think we may want to, you may take action after close.
Okay.
But it's up to y'all. That'll be all we're doing.
Yep. If Kirk, if you stay around just a little bit, I think we've got a short, short time anyway, so. So we may take action on item three and four when we come out of our closed session. And that brings us to item five, which is items for a decision on the OC spray policy for our employees. Mr. Duncan.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we'd had a request specifically from DSS employees who actually have to do home site visits. Recently, we had one of our employees making a home site visit for someone who was in a situation of elder care. And a family member locked our folks in the house and barred them in, and they couldn't get away. So staff has asked if there may be some non-lethal use of force that they can use, such as OC spray. We consulted first with our insurance companies, and they were all in favor of it. So we actually have adopted a policy here, or drafted a policy for adoption, to look at that would regulate if an employee wishes to carry, that they must have training. They must use a regulated OC spray. They can use some other, you know, off-brand or some other chemical we're not aware of. And mainly is that we're registering it, and we know that they've got proper training to know how to use it. And that A, they also inform law enforcement as soon as it happens. So the whole idea is for them to be able to get away and get away safely with as few as entries as possible.
If I read correctly, on the, what the insurance recommended, we have to supply it.
Correct, yes.
So they'll use whatever we approve and give to them.
Yeah, we would use a market-based. I don't think we'd want to use a law enforcement-type base. I know there are several brands out there. One of the ones that's highly recommended is a company called POM or Palm, and they make different sizes that can be concealed or, you know, worn in different locations, keychains, things like that. And it's got a, had a lot of study and research on it, so.
This policy is, it looks pretty extensive. Did we glean that from another county?
Actually, it was drafted from a variety of different sources that was in the private sector.
Has our town attorney looked it over, gone through it?
Uh, no, not that I, I cannot remember.
Uh, yeah, I saw it.
With the transition. Okay, thank you. With the transition between the prior, I can't remember, honestly, and the holidays.
All right. So here are the recommendations and the policy that's been presented here this evening. Do I hear a motion that we adopt that?
If they can't carry guns, I'll make a motion we adopt that.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Our next is item for decision shift differential policy for employees. Again, Mr. Donald Duncan.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this actually was something we were reviewing prior to the hurricane, and that has just kind of delayed quite a few things. And the idea being that we have a lot of experienced staff, and as the more experienced they get, they move to preferred shift typically on day shift. So while we were researching that, we also looked at our base pay for our telecommunications. And if you look at the chart there, it's very small. Caldwell County's on the left, and our, our base pay right now is about $34,000, and our competition goes up from there all the way to Alexander County, which is $10,000 more in base pay than what we're doing now. So essentially, their base pay is almost where a shift supervisor starts now. So we're, we're that far off. And you can see all of our surrounding counties here, and our competition, I'd be in the closest. So the, without doing a major budget adjustment, that would be expensive, and I think you may want to look at this with your new budget. But what we're recommending is a $2 per hour shift differential pay for those working night shift. And the reason is, is try to incentivize some of our more experienced staff to work at night and be there. Now, call volume does drop off at night, but when it's bad, when you have a 2:30 a.m. call, it's usually pretty serious. So trying to work some incentive out there. We've also talked about it with some other departments, but we'd like to start with telecommunications and see how this works as an incentive. An annual expense would be about $44,000 a year. So for the remainder of the year, it'd be $22,000 for nine telecommunications at night. If we're fully staffed, that includes benefits and all. There are other options, but I think this is a low-impact option that would have a high return for you.
All right. So here in the recommendation.
If we could advance the slide, I'll show you one more thing, too. Sorry. Let me give you an idea of the call volumes. So Caldwell County's there on the bottom. We're running about 155,000 calls a year. Of course, admin calls, the non-emergency calls is the majority of that. And then if you look at your neighbors, like Alexander County, now remember, they're less than half the population, but they're only running about 25% of the calls that we are. But they have the highest rate of pay.
Are they taking admin calls through, through that channel?
Yep. That's, that's everything. That's total call volume. So the darker blue is, is admin. The lighter blue is 911 calls. The ones that are in our territory are Burke County, which we're similar size. But also, we're ahead of Lincoln County, which is about 25% larger than us in population, as well as Watauga County, which is about half our size, but they're running a similar call volume. So I'm not sure what's happening between Watauga, Burke, and Caldwell. But other counties in the area, like Cleveland County, you know, we're way ahead, and they're almost twice our size of population. So it's, certainly the call volume justifies it, so much so that the 911 board has approved us for an additional seat, but we physically don't have a place to put it. And so we've got an additional funding for that this year. So what we're going to try to do is put in a mini-terminal in the supervisor's office so we can also have that extra seat.
All right. Any other questions for our manager?
I don't think so. I don't have any.
Do I hear a motion that we adopt this shift differential policy for employees?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Commissioner.
All right.
Do that. The main thing is here for everybody involved, if we ain't got communication help, we ain't got nothing.
Yes, sir. All right, any other?
Out of curiosity, um, what would it cost to give all of them that two dollars? Do, do you know what that number would be?
That'd be about eighty-five thousand, roughly. Uh, not counting supervisor staff, so add another, let's call it a hundred even with benefits.
Okay.
Round, round numbers. And that does not include sheriff's deputies or, um, detention facility as well. We haven't done that yet. We wanted to start with this one since we're the, that's the largest discrepancy that we have in our competition.
When, when do, uh, telecommunications come back in this three-year cycle where we're looking at everybody's salary?
Uh, they were first, so it would be year after. So we're just, we're, we, the new budget will be the third year.
Yeah.
But we can look at it at any time if you like, but that's just been our policy is to rotate around.
Well, I'd like to, obviously, um, I'm okay with doing this tonight, but I, I wanna make sure we take a hard look at these come, you know, budget, budget time, which I know we will, but.
All right. Well, do I hear a motion that we adopt this policy this evening? Oh, I did. Sorry.
All right.
Y'all doing too much talking tonight. All right, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. So thank you for that. Next is a lease amendment with the Anola Group for the six-oh-nine Harper Avenue property.
Commissioners, you may remember that we, we purchased the property there at six-oh-nine Harper, uh, the strip center. And, um, there is a tenant there and they had a, a federal lien against the property. We worked through that. And of course, they need time to move and relocate. They've purchased another piece of property and it's under construction now for renovations. They had until the end of this month to complete those renovations. They're not gonna make it. And they've asked for an extension to June first. Um, I, after talking with them on the phone, I think that we can request that they move that to maybe April or May. Uh, more in line with our timeline to begin demolition of that property and get it ready for future development. And I, if we put out an RFP and we get quotes on demolition and all the process with that, that's about how long it would take anyway. So if you wanna move that timeline from June to, uh, May or even April, then I think that would be amenable to that. Anytime would be, uh, be welcome with them.
All right. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
Well, it's a childcare facility and we sure don't wanna put a bunch of people in a bad way with childcare, so I, I'll make a motion that we approve it out till May or June, whatever we need to.
You just gotta tell me a date.
They need till June?
They've asked till June, but they think they can beat that, so.
Well, I'd make it till June, you know.
I agree with Jim. Just go ahead and give them June. If that's what they need. If they get out earlier, then that's fine.
Yeah.
It's probably an easy out lease where if they get out of March early, it won't go long.
We're, we essentially be on a month-to-month at this point.
Yeah.
Um, so, and we'd continue the lease rate the same amount.
I make a motion we approve that. Lease agreement with Anola Group.
Till June thirtieth?
June thirtieth, yeah.
June thirtieth?
Is that, uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Manager, is that same rate as the?
Yes, that's what I was adding is that, yes, that it should remain the same rate unless y'all have any other. And we put that back into the same fund, so if there's any maintenance issues on the building or anything like that.
All right. So we've got a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries as well. And that brings us to our consent agenda this evening. So, Mr. Duncan.
Yes, we've got a few items on the consent agenda. Uh, first is the, we have the ordinance for hurricane and lien mitigation. We just set that up as a quick line item until we had a better idea of what we're gonna do. This is gonna be a multi-year project. It's gonna go on, recovery will go on for a couple of more years. Maybe, maybe, uh, many years before we see reimbursement. This is a reminder, uh, when I did Hurricane Hugo close out, it was thirteen years from the day of the event before we closed it out. So these large-scale events like this can take some time. So my recommendation to the finance officer was to create a multi-year capital project fund and let's slide everything over there and we can keep track of it there better. And so it's not affecting your direct budget. It'll be its own budget. Uh, and we've included the, uh, overtime request in that. That's category Z, and you may or may not remember from your, from your NIMs classes or ICS, but category Z is the last thing you can apply for, so we'll be putting in an application for that reimbursement of overtime in the amount of three-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars. So your total budget amendment's two-point-five million. Now, on paper, it looks more than that because you're moving it out of this fund over to that fund. That's why the number looks bigger. But it, because we do modify accrual, but it's really two-point-five million. The next item is, uh, Wilson Creek Flood Sirens. We'll also be applying for that once it's an accepted project. We believe that will be an accepted project for amount of one-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand. That's a complete repair and replacement of the old system that was taken out during the flooding. And FEMA has already given us conditional approval on that as a hazard mitigation project, so we think we'll get that money. Public schools, building repair, renovations, use of lottery funds. This is to improve, uh, water treatment at the Coswell School. Uh, the earnings in that fund right now are two-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars. They'd like to draw, the school system would like to draw that down with your permission. Uh, budget revisions, uh, eleven A for DSS hurricane relief funds. We have four-hundred-and-five thousand dollars that are already appropriated for hurricane relief funds to go to DSS. And just today, we received a notice of another four-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand. We don't like to do things last minute like that, but you wouldn't wanna wait a month to have energy, uh, grant funds coming through when it's needed most now in the coldest part of the year. That's item eleven B. And then we have, uh, bad debt write-off in the Health Department of twenty-seven thousand dollars. We do that annually. Uh, that's basically, uh, people we build for, their co-pays, and they have not paid, so we periodically write that off. Animal care enclosure, uh, you may or may not remember, a long time ago when that project started, that there was a commitment that if there was any funding left over in the project, we would build a shelter for larger animals. As animal care, uh, you know, goes in and has to seize animals, on occasion, we have to keep them for a week or two. Hogs, horses, cows, larger animals like that before we can find a farm or dispose of the animals if they have to be put down, if they've not been taken care of. It's not often, but it does happen. It also allows us room to store some of our bulk items. So we had interest earnings on that project left. It was about forty thousand dollars. Uh, the initial proposal we got was, if I remember right, a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. And so it was like, we can't afford that. Uh, and then we put it in the capital proposal for the budget for this year. You guys approved a capital project list and that's one of the ones that's been out there for a couple of years. So we're gonna try to get a, a small metal building, you know, uh, prefab shed and put down there and so we can be able to store a few animals if we need to. For temporary purposes only. We don't wanna be, you know, in the business of raising cows. That's not our thing. Item fourteen is Caldwell County Sheriff's Office of, uh, approval to submit for a grant from ExxonMobil, the Good Neighbor Grant. This'll be a hundred percent grant to buy tactical helmets with. And item fifteen is reappointment of Ms. Tara Swanson to the Council on Aging. And then you have the approval of the minutes, and I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
All right, anybody have any questions on the consent agenda this evening?
Sure.
Hearing none? Do I hear a motion that we adopt the consent agenda as has been, uh, discussed?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's consent agenda as the county manager has presented.
All right. Any other comment or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And that brings us to our item of entering into, uh, closed session. And so I'll make a motion that we enter into the closed session in a discussion of personnel matter as well as housing ordinance. I think we have to say that too.
Yep.
So, uh, I have the motion. Any other discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So we'll be in closed session and, uh, we may have some action when we come out of the closed session dealing with a couple of issues, so. Uh, but you're free to go if you would like to. So thank you for being here this evening. That big room down there. We used to run it right there. That's an office, man.
Is it?
Yeah. Mallory.
Do you have a signature package for me other than that?
I try my best to be there. I got a funeral to be at in Statesville, so.
Try to get back. Play life roles.
No problem. They had a big crowd in this guy down there. I think we had about fifty people for poems. That's okay. How are you, sir?
Me too.
Thank you very much. Same to you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, six o'clock. Okay, let me see what I can do. I think I should be able to as far as I know. Uh, yeah, I, I'm gonna try to come.
...
I'd like to take this opportunity, Mr. Duncan, to thank you for all your time and your service and hard work here in our county, for our citizens here. You've done a great job in building the team, bringing the everybody together to work as one. And I think that's to be commended by you because we did not have that before you came here. I also want to commend you for all your hard work during the hurricane, all the things that you did, all the things that people don't even know you did. So I can't thank you enough for your time and service here for the decisions of our county. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Duncan, I would also ditto those words from Commissioner Potter. When you came on, our county was kind of in a, in a situation of new and fresh leadership and you brought, you brought that. Also then we, we came through a serious time of COVID. And you took the bull by the horns with that along with a lot of folks in our county that, that served well. And so I appreciate that. Again, the hurricane, a lot of improvements that we've seen in employee salaries. You've added to the county surplus every year, I believe. And so our county is in great financial shape. I thank you for that and I wish you well in your, in the new endeavors.
Thanks, sir.
And I'll just simply echo all of that and wish you well in your new endeavors as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So with the motion, I'll call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye and accepting the resignation. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. So.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Wayne Rash as Assistant County Manager effective immediately, to become Intram County Manager effective March 1st to 2025, and direct the County Manager to work closely with Mr. Rash and to keep Mr. Rash appraised of all day-to-day activities of the county's operation and to provide Mr. Rash information regarding all outstanding matters relating to the county.
All right. So we've got a motion. Any discussion or comment on that? Here and none, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. And that motion carries unanimously. So, thank you, everyone, and appreciate everybody staying around for our lengthy discussions this evening. So, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for being here. it runs off into the creek right behind it, it's basically sitting in the creek. And they have shown no interest in doing the demolition and cleaning up the property. So I routinely get calls on this, complaints, what are you going to do, when are you going to do it? And of course, I just tell them the process, so I'm no stranger to getting the calls. So that was, that one I feel extremely good about, for all intents and purposes, I'll leave it in your hands, it's your call. The cost on it's going to be about fourteen thousand dollars for the demolition and clearing of the lot.
All right, Destin, can we do both of these at one time, or should we take them into easily?
You can do both if you want to, you can do a block vote on them.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so move to the next one, Kurt.
All right, the next one is five-one-one-nine Bloomfield Estates. This one caught on fire in twenty-twenty-three, insurance paid out, they did nothing with the property. It's free and clear in their names, and they've done nothing. And it was significantly worse since the storm. So the gable ends on this house have no support whatsoever. My concern is that it's in the middle of a neighborhood, there's children's play equipment directly under the gable ends on both sides, and I've notified them, I've spoken to them numerous times, and they've shown no interest in doing the demolition on it either. There's a little standing treehouse thing right here. So this one is not as cut and dried. This one I would recommend for a summary abatement because of how dangerous it is, the way it's standing now. So to do this one, we would do it before the ninety days. If we don't, if we wait ninety days, then we can't do it as a summary, because it's not an imminent hazard if you're going to wait ninety days. So I could see where we would want to pause and slow-walk this one, and give Mr. Hall time to look over all my paperwork on it, because he has not seen it yet. The other one, I feel extremely confident that we've done everything we need to do on, but again, it's not my money.
All right. So hearing Kurt's presentation, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the ordinance to demolish property at twenty-six sixty-nine Collisville Road. Also, demolish the property located at five-one-one-nine Bloomfield Estates, pending our attorney's review.
And Mr. Willis, I'll give you a call tomorrow when I get a chance to look at those things. Now, I'll get with you quickly.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Yep.
All right. All right, so hearing the motion, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and that motion carries. And then another item of business that we have tonight, we've received Mr. Duncan's resignation, and he sent that to us on Friday, and so he's given us his last official day as being here on Friday, February the twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-five. And so I'll entertain a motion this evening that we accept Donald Duncan Junior's resignation from our county manager's role.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we accept his resignation.
All right, any other discussion or comment?
I'd like to take this opportunity, Mr. Duncan, to thank you for all your time and your service and hard work for here in our county, for our citizens here. You've done a great job in building the team, bringing the, everybody together to work as one. And I think that's to be commended by you, because we did not have that before you came here. Also want to commend you for all your hard work during the hurricane, all the things that you did, all the things that people don't even know you did. So I can't thank you enough for your time and service here for the citizens of our county, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Duncan, I would also ditto those words from Commissioner Potter. When you came on, our county was kind of in a, in a situation of new and fresh leadership, and you brought, you brought that. Also, then we, we came through a serious time of COVID, and you took the bull by the horns with that, along with a lot of folks in our county that, that served well, and so I appreciate that. Again, the hurricane, a lot of improvements that we've seen in employee salaries, you've added to the county surplus every year, I believe, and so our county is in great financial shape. I thank you for that, and I wish you well in your, in the new endeavors.
Thanks, sir.
And I'll just simply echo all of that and wish you well in your new endeavors as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so with the motion, I'll call the question, all in favor signify by saying aye and accepting the resignation.
Aye.
Any opposed, and that motion carries. So...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Wayne Rash as Assistant County Manager effective immediately, to become interim county manager effective March first to two thousand twenty-five, and direct the county manager to work closely with Mr. Rash, and to keep Mr. Rash appraised of all day-to-day activities of the county's operation, and to provide Mr. Rash information regarding all outstanding matters relating to the county.
All right, so we've got a motion, any discussion or comment on that? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and that motion carries unanimously. So thank you, everyone, and appreciate everybody staying around for our lengthy discussions this evening. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for being here.